President.
Alderman Cohn.
Present.
Hello.
Commissioner Banton.
Present.
Commissioner Boas.
Can't hear you.
President.
Who did you just call?
The last I heard was Commissioner Boas.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Pfeffer. Commissioner Weber.
Present.
Chair Strader.
Present.
And you have a form.
Okay, thank you with that. Again, last, I want to thank everybody for last week's attended, last month's attendance of the meeting. At that point, the, I hope everybody has received the minutes and I'll accept the move to approve the minutes as written, presented.
So moved, Commissioner Weber.
Second, Alderman Cohn.
It's been moved by Commissioner Weber, second about Alderman Cohn. Call for vote, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman. Commissioner Pfeffer. Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Chair Strader.
Aye.
And motion passes with our president voting on.
All right, thank you very much for that. The first, really, we do have a short agenda. The first item of this, this nine, blight over an acre who's presenting and the floor is yours.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, awesome. So tonight we're reviewing a redevelopment plan for the 4900 to 14 Grabaway Avenue and 4266 Delore Street redevelopment area. The area consists of three vacant parcels and is over an acre located in the Bevo Mill neighborhood. The goal of the prospective developers, Tower Grove Neighborhood Development Corporation, and Luther Senior Services is to develop the land into a four-story residential building for senior citizens. The sloot, next slide please. The sloot designation is that of neighborhood commercial area. However, given the project doesn't have any proposed commercial uses, the planning commission may find the project to be in conformity with the sloot via the adjacency rule and comply with the neighborhood preservation area which includes areas where there's existing housing, corner commercial building stock will be preserved and augmented with new infereresidential corner commercial development. Next slide please. Next, the planning commission previously passed a special use district in the area and covers the same parts of the Bevo Mill and Dutch Town neighborhoods. The project site is located in the multi-sub area of the SUD which permits the heights of all buildings or structures up to six stories or sixty feet, or sixty feet maximum, whichever is less. Next slide, thank you. Here is a view of the existing site orienting north. The site, next slide please, thank you. The site plan of the area demonstrates that the residential component will be located closer to the intersection of Grabaway and Morgan Forest. Meanwhile, entrance to parking will be accessed through Delore Street and an existing alley. Next slide, all right. Here's a rendering of the front facade of the residential building. And then, next slide please. In a counterclockwise manner, the surrounding uses around the area includes the Das, Das Bevo Historic Museum, which is northwest of the site, a floral shop across the street to the west. Long Middle School is located south of the site on the same city block which you see in the picture in the back. And this is also, south of the site is a city owned plaza. And then to the north on Delore Street is a miniature museum. Next slide please, thank you. In summary, PDA staff recommends for the redevelopment area to be cleared, blighted and in conformity with the sloot, adjacent neighborhood preservation area and recommends approval of the redevelopment plan. I'm happy to answer any questions and also Sean Spencer, Executive Director of Tower Grove Neighborhood Development Corporation and colleagues are on the line to also answer any questions.
All right, thank you. You said Sean Spencer, am I correct?
That is correct.
All right, Mr., Sean, if you'd like to say anything about the project prior to questions from the commissioner.
Thank you, appreciate it commissioner and thanks to all the commissioners and all the people that put their volunteer efforts to work here with the planning commission. Patience is our virtue and we have put in three Lytech applications over the last four years without an award to date. We're hoping for, we, we applied for a housing HUD 202 loan about six months ago when we're really hoping that we get that award here coming up in the September, October timeframe. So we really feel like this is the time and we're going to get this project built. As most of you know, Bevo hasn't seen new construction of this size probably since the birth of the district. We had great partners with Lutheran Senior Services, we have great partners with Midwest Bank Center who donated the site with the effort of building affordable housing on the, on this rather large location. It's a prominent site, we think that it's going to drive additional investments. There are, there is a large, I believe, almost acre site to the south, which is just by the park, which we think is probably the next site for redevelopment. And we think that it's going to bring additional activity and businesses to the area. And we look forward to having that happen. I do want to mention that we do have, this is a commercial building, obviously, we don't have retail in this particular rendering or this particular part of the, the evolution of the project. We have been told by MHDC over multiple years that our funding sources with Lytech threw up red flags with the commercial addition to the property. So that was one of the reasons why we pulled commercial out of this, this, this particular part of the project. And we're looking forward to getting the funding moving forward and then opening up the community room, which is going to be over a thousand square feet of space in the center of the building to host community meetings. We believe the neighborhood association and the, the local city will also participate in using that space. So we will have some activity on that, on that block. And we look forward to opening up to any other organizations that are interested in bringing good things to the area.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spencer. What will happen, if you're not aware, I'll go through the list of all of the commissioners, they'll ask any questions and you or who you designate can respond. I'll, we'll be calling Alderman Boyd first and then Alderman Cohen following. Alderman Boyd, any questions?
Uh, no questions, sound like an exciting project. Is this in the 14th ward, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Right, Alderman Cohn.
I, I don't have any questions per se, I'm very familiar with the old bank site here and have had conversations with Alderwoman Howard about her support of the projects. You know, I, I think that the design itself could be a little bit more exciting, but I appreciate Mr. Spencer providing some insight with respect to why the first floor doesn't have commercial at this point. I, I was unaware of the kind of, I guess prerequisites from MHDC at this point. But, you know, I, certainly a very exciting project and, you know, as Mr. Spencer mentioned, this part of the city hasn't really seen this type of, you know, investment of the scale or development of the scale in quite a while. So it's very exciting to, to see that transpiring here or hope to, at least.
All right, thank you, Alderman Cohn. Commissioner Banton.
A couple of questions, just one about the site itself. How long has that particular site slash sites been vacant and when did you guys acquire the property?
We acquired the property of, of middle of, middle to late 2020. The bank ceased operations maybe six months prior to that. And it's been vacant for probably about six to, six to eight months. That was part of the, the challenge, we wanted to make sure that our site was ready to be developed when our applications went in. So we thought that that was another, another win for the next round of, of applications. And thankfully Midwest Bank Center paid for that demolition for us.
Did they, did you know that they were moving out and there was an agreement for you to purchase the property immediately after that? Or was the reason for, for them vacating the site, do you know?
The, yeah, the, the original building only took up about a quarter of the actual site. And I think that that was, that was located on the southern tip, so it was predominantly a large parking lot. And at the time, the first time that we talked with Midwest Bank Center, they intended to add a location to the mixed-use building. And at that, at that point, we moved forward with the Lytech application. That application was not funded and I believe it was after a year, after the second time we applied for it, the bank made a decision that they wanted to, to move to a new location across the street. So this is a CRA-based location for the bank and they wanted to make sure that they stay within a certain, you know, certain proximity to the original location for that CRA credit. And that's why they, they relocated across the street. They weren't really, I, I believe with COVID coming on and some of the other reasons that banking's kind of going all digital now, they weren't sure that they needed such a large branch after a couple of years of us not getting funded for this project.
The reason I ask is because it, it does concern me a little bit, given the timeframe that it's, we're now, we're saying we're blighting this lot because it's vacant, but it's only been vacant for a few months, six months. Well, since, since you bought it, has there, I mean, is there that much concern that the private marketer or private developer wouldn't have stepped in and, and done this themselves?
Very much so. The only way that this project gets built is with federal and state subsidies. The market is not strong enough to carry the debt load that would be needed to create 80 quality affordable senior houses. Just as an example, a one-bedroom in the Bevo neighborhood based on the market studies about $600 to $650. You'd have to perform that building as a new construction at about $1,200 to $1,500 a month in order to pay for it. So yes, there, there's major limitations in the market and that is why, there's one really good reason why we want to bring this project to Bevo, to be able to show new construction being built, there's some momentum in the area and hopefully more, more will come. The other thing that I've mentioned is that, yes, the bank could have gone a different direction instead of donating the site, which really helps our, our ability to, to create this product. But they certainly could have sold it on the open market and it could be a quick trip, it could be something that may not be as beneficial to the neighborhood. I don't believe Alderwoman Howard's on the line, but she will attest that she gets calls from many people and many residents in her, her ward that want to move into this building. They want to stay in the city and as somebody who's out in Wentzville right now, you know, we want to be, we want to create urban, great quality housing for people to be able to stay in the neighborhoods in which they, they've raised their kids and, and worked and lived and played.
Sure. Quick question for the planning staff, is there a neighborhood plan for this area?
There isn't a neighborhood plan for this area.
Not for this area? Okay. Final, more like a comment, and your, your site plan is good. I do, being an architect, have to make a comment on the facade composition. I find it one of the more challenging compositions that I've seen in my career. Is that a final design?
Jared, I'll push this over to you, but I, I will say that, you know, we can't please everybody. And this particular renting, we did go out to the public and it was well-received, it was well-received by our, our board. And, you know, to personally, you know, I would like something a little bit more modern, but I also feel like, you know, we've got to meet the demands and the expectations of the residents of the neighborhood. And because we haven't had a lot of pushback, this, I believe this design is close to being final. But Jared, you can speak to the, the elements and, and how the, the design was, was created.
I mean, I don't, I don't need to go through all of that, I would just say, maybe consider, maybe paring back. Do you need all those materials? I don't know if I've ever seen a material stop directly aligned with a window jamb before. Maybe, just maybe do a little reconsidering of these items. But that's, that's my final comment. Overall, I think it's a, it's a good project, I'd like to see that density added to the neighborhood. Maybe just one more quick design powwow with your architect might be warranted, but final comment, thanks for, thanks for presenting.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boas, please.
Good project, like the site plan. I'm going to look to my fellow commissioner to provide the architect's advice, thanks so much.
All right, Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah, I agree, it's a great project. I, I don't really have any questions, but glad to see something very worthwhile being developed on the site of the previous Bohemian savings alone. And I bet most of you on this call have no idea that was there, but as a small child, I've visited that frequently with my parents and my grandparents, so, thank you.
So you still have money buried on the site. Commissioner Peoples.
No questions, great project.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodman. Not hearing Commissioner Goodman at this moment. He might be muted if you're, Commissioner Weber.
Um, yes, nice project. And I do remember Bohemian. So one question I have, it sounded to me like you've made a lot of applications for federal dollars and you, you haven't heard if you've gotten those yet, but you feel confident. My question is, if you don't get all those things that you applied for, what happens to the project?
We have a, a commitment to the Bevo neighborhood to keep pushing and to keep applying for the funds. What's different this year, Commissioner, is that we're applying for HUD 202 money instead of the highly competitive Lytech 9% credits. So that's why we're, we're overly confident. In addition to that, we added Lutheran Senior Services. As you may know, they're the largest not-for-profit in the region and they bring a massive balance sheet and over 100 years of experience. So we really think that their addition to our partnership's going to help us get across the line. But we will continue fighting to get this project built and we're as optimistic as ever and we've learned a lot through the process. But we're where we want to be right now and, you know, fingers crossed we get the, the award here in the next four to, four to 12 weeks.
So you, you, your company owns the property, correct?
Our not-for-profit owns the, owns the land right now, yes.
Okay, so, and, and sorry for the, the questions and maybe staff could answer this for me. Let's say he doesn't get it and the project stays dormant for like a year. And then they decide to sell it, does blighting the area help or, or hurt? I mean, I just want to, I want to know that in the future, if this building doesn't go up, what really happens to the site?
Well, I can answer that to some degree. We have a requirement based on the Ahab tax credits that were provided to the bank with the donation to a not-for-profit that we have to build affordable housing on this lot. It's a deed restriction, so that is going to, that, that, that has to happen. So that's what I believe will happen and, you know, with the blighting, it's really tied to the, the tax abatement and in the, in the past and with this project, it's, it's a matter of process in order to get the 15 years of tax abatement, which helps us make all the numbers work, given how low the rents are going to be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, no questions from the chair, except for I will simply note that Sean did mention he lived in Wentzville. You know, there's great property and home, housing in the city of St. Louis, you might want to consider that.
I, I, I am, I am a Shaw resident and have been for 18 years, I just happen to be in Wentzville.
Okay, just wanted, just wanted to bring that up, you know, you mentioned that. With that, I would ask that the, oh, I see.
Chair, I think Commissioner Pfeffer joined us.
Yeah, I'd agree with you, I'd notice Commissioner Pfeffer joined. At this point, I'll entertain a question or if he has any.
Thanks Chairman, no questions, just a brief comment and just that, as Sean was explaining, the market really is not built to provide quality affordable housing. And that's why these projects do see complex capital stacks with local, state, federal tax credits, incentives stacked together. We have a affordable housing gap here in the city of over 30,000 units. And so, just really want to appreciate this project and thank you Sean for taking on this affordable housing project in a critical geography.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll entertain the recommendation from the staff first.
So moved.
No, I'm asking the staff to review the recommendation first.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
PDA staff recommends the redevelopment area to be cleared, blighted and in conformity with the sloot, adjacent neighborhood preservation area and recommend approval of the redevelopment plan.
Okay, I'll entertain the desires of the, of the commission.
So moved to, to, for the staff recommendation.
Second, Commissioner Boas.
I have, I have a motion by Commissioner Weber, a second by Commissioner Boas, call for vote, please.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Cohn. Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
I'm going to ask Michelle if she can move closer to a microphone, we're having a very difficult, I'm hearing her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Strader.
Aye.
And the motion passes without President voting on.
Did we lose Commissioner Goodman?
She was never present.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, with that vote, it does pass. Don, was there any information you'd like to share at this moment?
Just two comments, one, the, the CDC that Sean Spencer runs is the property owner and you can hear his commitment for what they're trying to do for the neighborhood. So, yeah, there's the property owner, a much, bunch of that goes on. But two other just quick context is I'll remind, it is a chapter 99 blighting and redevelopment plan that we're actually approving, which this development is to be implemented via. So two things, one, we will pass along Jake's comments to LCRA because they will do a design review of the final design and drawings about the, the, the breakage of the facade design to be looking out for. And then second is, the chapter 99 will be forwarded to the Board of Aldermen for a vote. And then it becomes in place for this geography and stays in place to this geography until it's rescinded. The catch to that is the owner is the one that's seeking to be designated developer. If they were to choose to sell, to get the tax abatement and those benefits, a new developer would have to be evaluated and chosen to be the developer. So just a little context.
Okay, thank you, Don, thank you. With that, it appears that the next item is, Cecilia's going to present to us.
Hello commissioners, today we are reviewing a zoning tax amendment, which, which will apply to all the city. Two amendments are being considered here by the commission. First is that a public hearing for zoning items take place at the planning commission in addition to the public hearing that takes place for any legislative action. And the second amendment is that the Board of Adjustment consider conformance to the city's comprehensive plan and their decision-making process. With regard to the public hearing at the planning commission, the revised statute of Missouri, chapter 89, requires that a public hearing be held for any zoning change in regulation, restrictions or boundary changes, and that it allows citizens to be heard and noticed at least 15 days ahead of time. So currently, the legislative process serves both purposes, both legislative hearing and a state statute requirement for a zoning change, which, as I previously mentioned, requires 15 days notice to the public. This proposed amendment would separate those two things and hold two public hearings, one at the planning commission, which meets the requirement of the state statute, and a second would simply follow the normal legislative hearing process, which really only requires 24 hours advanced notice. So this would allow people to attend a public hearing in the evening and voice support or concerns and it would allow commissioners to hear the public in determining their recommendation to the Board of Aldermen. It would also follow best practices and in that, I mean, the public hearings in most municipalities in the St. Louis region, as well as peer cities, you know, across the nation, such as Des Moines, Pittsburgh, Chicago, New York City, Cincinnati and Louisville, among others. They, they do hear their public hearings at the planning commission. Finally, it would eliminate a point of confusion at the Board of Aldermen around which legislation requires a 15 days advance posting and which do not. We have had some issues with postings either not being done correctly or having to be redone because of that confusion. So this would eliminate that. I should note, start the next slide, that this does come with an amendment to the time that the commission has to review a submission as a local requirement. This isn't part of the state statute, but currently, we have 45 days to review a zoning request at the planning commission. That timeline is detailed on the top Gantt chart you see on the screen. While at face value, the change appears to add 60 days by going from 45 to 60 days to a zoning request, the legislative process will no longer have to meet that posting requirement and therefore that time is simply removed from the legislative process and added to the commission's process. Therefore, it currently takes 22 days between introduction and the HUD's hearing to ensure the posting is complete. And this, that proposed timeline would then shorten to four days. And about 15 days would go to the planning commission's timeline. This is of course a perfect timeline, both iterations could have variations depending on Aldermanic breaks and, you know, other variations. But this gives you an idea of what this would do to, you know, a, a timeline for a developer. I'd also note that over the last year, the average petition took us, at commission staff, about 26 days, over 13 zoning requests to get planning commission for review. So we will continue to do our due diligence and ensure a timely review, but do appreciate being able to build in the time to accommodate postings as necessary. The second request before the commission is to ensure that the Board of Adjustment variances are granted in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So this would allow for the review of the variance request for any use, construction, alteration of a building or structure which doesn't meet the zoning code to be reviewed against the strategic land use plan and any adopted component of the comprehensive plan, such as the neighborhood plan. Additionally, this is in keeping with best practices and follows language in other cities of Missouri, such as St. Joseph's, Columbia, Springfield and Maryland Heights, among others. Finally, this isn't in the commission's purview, but we did want to give you all a heads up that there is a consideration possible that would change chapter three of the city's code. And that, that is the administrative chapter. So this is a potential change that would change the requirement that the Board of Aldermen need a majority vote of the Board of Aldermen in overturning a negative decision of the planning commission. That would change to a two-thirds majority vote. This brings further stature to the commission's decisions and recommendations, who are now considering public testimony and will continue to consider adopted plans. It also follows best practices as many peer and aspirational cities do, such as Des Moines, Pittsburgh, New York City, Cincinnati, and locally Maplewood and Crookwood also have these requirements, among others. So that requires a greater majority to overturn a recommendation of the planning commission. In all, PDA staff and the regulation project team, which includes the zoning administrator and the city councilor's office, have researched, reviewed, and prepared the proposed amendments of the tax changes and found it to be in compliance conformance to the loop and recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Cecilia. I'll go through, giving commissioners opportunity. Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cecilia, can you go back to the timeline again for me, please? Okay, so on the timeline, so bill would be submitted for first reading. Just explain the days in more detail to me. So is it the nine days? How does that work?
Sure. So we've, this is a perfect scenario, but we have a planning commission on Wednesday. So we would not be able to submit a board bill to the Board of Aldermen until the following Tuesday and get it to the following Friday. That's nine days. After that, that this is where things kind of change. So you will no longer need to have the the state statute requirement of 15 days. So from a Friday to the next Tuesday, if if a HUD was being held that following Tuesday, you could have a zoning item on that agenda. And that so that would be four days from that from that previous Friday.
Okay, got you.
The second reading then is obviously the next Friday after that Tuesday, so that's three days. And then every week thereafter would be the the rest of the legislative process.
So let me ask you this, you know, depending on, you know, when we're going down for a particular break. So on the perfection, will we still be in compliance if we suspended the rules on the same day of perfection to third read and finally pass?
Yes, absolutely. You could still use all of the same tools.
Okay, cool, cool. I want to say I know Don and I spoke about this several months ago, and I thought it was a great idea. I'm in total support. I think it empowers the Planning Commission, because what I find frustrating, and I'm an Alderman, of course, and I get a vote at the Board of Aldermen, but if the Planning Commission denied something, the Board of Aldermen could say, so what, and get 15 votes, and it passes anyway, which is a slap in the face to the work of the Planning Commission, where people have really put their personal time into reviewing and asking great questions and ensuring the integrity of the process. So I'll say good work putting this together. It has a nice flow to it. I'm happy to sponsor the board bill at the Board of Aldermen. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Boyd. Alderman Cone.
All right, actually, that was going to be my question in terms of, I mean, these are administrative changes that would require a board bill. So, you know, Alderman Boyd indicated that he's sponsoring one. You know, I'm in favor of these changes. I think they're necessary and overdue in some cases. So, you know, thank you for all of your work. Look forward to going through the legislative process with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Banton.
No questions.
Commissioner Boas. Commissioner Boas.
Oh, sorry. No questions. Thanks for doing the work and bringing it forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley.
No questions.
Commissioner Peoples.
No questions.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
No questions. Thanks, Don and staff, for your hard work on this important reform.
Commissioner Weber.
No questions.
Thank you. And I have just one administrative question for for David. And this is no no read on Alderman Boyd or Alderman Cone. Can they vote? Can they motion and or vote on this?
As planning commissioners, they are serving in their commissioner capacity, so absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Don, and you want to make any statements prior to the vote, or you want to wait?
I'd love to. I can't vote, but thank you for the staff, hard work on this. Everybody, we're thinking about it and putting it together. Much of this was something that we really considered and researched when we created PDA, you know, in 1999, when planning, the Planning Commission really wasn't, was delegated to another entity. Many things we tried to do, we didn't get done, the idea of having the public hearing for the zoning changes at the Planning Commission. But we did, as you know, we determined that the Planning Commission would meet at 5:30 in the evening. And so bringing those back to us, it will be at a time when the public can come. Think how often you've you've wanted to know whether people next door are concerned. They'll become, they'll be for you. You'll vote, and we'll send it on to the Board of Aldermen, and they will certainly have the legislative process. But your expertise, your input from the public will all have been digested at the Planning Commission's in a lot. It's a best practice. I thank you for for voting on it, and that's improvement. I will remind you something that that the chair said last month when we approved the neighborhood plan. Approving neighborhood plans is a task of the Planning Commission to be a little bit of pulling the political process out of some of these decisions. Again, to be something that we can be neighborhood-based, we can be plan-based, and that's all to the good. And the corollary to that is going along with the the extra increase in the vote ratio that would have to occur at the Board of Aldermen to overturn a decision of the Planning Commission. So I think it's best practice, it's progressive, and I think it will be a better place by by doing it this way and more democratic in a in a way that that the public will come and testify before you on those zoning changes.
Okay, thank you, Don, for that. I will entertain a motion. Well, let me ask the staff to review the the request, please.
Absolutely. So PDA staff has and the and regulation team have researched, reviewed, and prepared the proposed amendments and reviewed those amendments and found them to be compliant with the loop and recommends approval of the zoning tax changes.
Call for vote. Call for vote, action, please.
I move that we adopt staff's recommendation on a proposed amendment to the zoning code.
Second, Alderman Cone.
It's been moved by Commissioner Boyd, second about Commissioner Cone. Call for vote.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Strather.
Aye.
And the motion passes without President Gordy nine.
Thank you for that. I believe there was one topic that Cecilia wanted to talk, speak about that was not on the actual agenda, I don't believe.
Yep, it's on the agenda under informational item.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. There it is.
Follow it to the bottom. All right. I'll make this pretty brief. I just wanted to give you all a quick update on the neighborhood planning strategy. You all received a document with this cover in your packet. This is a summary of feedback that we received in an open comment period that we had through the months of June, July, and August. Over that time, staff engaged with over 300 individuals through presentations, one-on-one conversations, attending neighborhood meetings, community events, and collecting responses in an online Google form. This table here gives you a snapshot of the organizations that we engaged in this comment effort. Additionally, this map shows the breadth of folks that were engaged. The blue areas are where the neighborhood associations were engaged in addition to individual residents. The red areas are areas where only residents were engaged, such as a resident attending one of the events, or when we received individual correspondence. And in the purple areas are areas that our staff reached out to associations, but were not able to connect for engagement. Overall, the summary provides both a summary of the themes and questions and discussions that we had with the community members and provides our staff responses as well. We received feedback on the proposed planning clusters, which have now been changed to planning areas. We received feedback on accessibility and questions about how these plans or efforts will ultimately affect each individual person or their property owner, specifically as to how it might impact things like crime, development, what topics the plans would cover, and how it would address people-centered issues. We also had questions and concerns about transparency and implementation. And finally, there was an interest in understanding what folks can be doing in the meantime if their neighborhood doesn't, isn't one of the first to receive the resources. They also wanted to know how they will be able to be involved once the process begins and why we're doing neighborhood planning as opposed to comprehensive planning. We go to the next slide. As I previously mentioned, all of this has a response and a summary in the summary and has informed changes to the strategy. So a red line of those revisions to the strategy can be found on the Planning Commission's agenda material page for this meeting. And a revised version of the strategy will be posted on our website and will guide our work moving forward. Finally, the strategy is intended to be a living and breathing document, so I want to, you know, emphasize that this process will evolve throughout our planning processes as we learn more and hear from residents along the way and through our experiences about what's working and what's not. So we will bring this back to you for revisions as needed and keep you all informed on how things are going. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge that this effort was not small or easy. Alexa and Jonathan really took the lead on this effort and did an absolutely fantastic job working through this in addition to all the Planning Commission items and regular requests that come through our doors. So I just wanted to publicly and with you all, let you know, thank them for their working tirelessly, including many nights and weekends to make sure that the initiative that truly reflects what the community needs. So if you have any questions or comments, we would love to hear them.
I will open the floor if there's a commissioner that wants to make any comments without roll call, without a roll call.
Just to just to comment that your hard work is appreciated. As always, I think, you know, I might be slightly biased as an architect here, but I think a good city could always use more planning. So glad to see the neighborhood and the planning efforts continue, and you guys are doing good work spearheading that effort. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. And you just made Don dance in his chair, even though they did put him in the hallway, in the hallway. I saw somebody's hand come up and go back down.
Yeah, I'll jump in. I think that was mine. Couldn't agree more that that planning is always needed, and especially right now. We're at such a pivotal moment as a city with hundreds of millions of federal dollars coming down the pipeline and the need for community and data-driven processes driven by the neighborhoods and the residents themselves to guide us in terms of setting priorities is so critical. So if ever there was a time to to really invest in neighborhood planning, it is now, and there's nothing worse than a plan that that sits on a shelf and really excited to turn around and with these federal funds actually translate the resident's vision into reality.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, I want to echo with Commissioner Pfeffer said. I'm very excited. I've always been a supporter of planning since the first year I've been Alderman. Aside that, I became, you know, really close and worked on a significant project here in the 22nd Ward with Arlington Grove. And, man, good work, Cecilia, you and your team. The community engagement is so important, and I'm just happy to see you had a great diverse group of people participating in this process.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyd. Commissioner Boas, I believe your hand was up.
Oh, it wasn't up. I was just putting up applause for basically what Jake had said, because it really is, Don, you've just built such a great team, and they're doing really great work. It's it's really nice to see.
Thank you, Commissioner Boas. I will say to first to the commissioners, let me thank you for your time, because coming in and once a week, you know, once a month, and your time is invaluable. You're not getting paid for the work, and I appreciate the commitment that you all have and the interest and passion you serve with. But then I do want to thank Cecilia, Don, and your team. You are doing good work, and you, as a resident of the city, you make it all worthwhile, and as much as bureaucracy sometimes drains us, the process is definitely worth the planning. So we do thank you for that. With that, no further questions, no further action tonight. I would entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So move.
Second.
It's been who seconded? I saw the move from Commissioner Bradley second.
Weber.
Commissioner Weber. With that, we the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Look for your dates and time via email next month. Happy Memorial Day to everyone. I mean, Labor Day. Be very safe, please.
Same to you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.